Pretty honest with you, but you know it's not a road. I travel all the time, but I'll take a look at this afternoon when we leave here. We need some lighting, we'll put it up there because every intersection where there's a red light at night needs to be lit.
Yeah, it's not lit at all, it's pretty dark here. That's noticeable.
All right, thank you.
Chief?
All is well with fireworks.
Okay. Eddie?
Business as usual.
I will be dispersing the funds of the first check to Second Street. I have a this week's deals, so I'll send you all that information and see how the stores have been doing and how before I actually pay them. So, I'll be right back.
All right, thank you.
Okay, on to business. First, we have Andrew Hairston and Beverly Pike representing Main Street, which to address the council concerning their plans for a farmer's market. Come on up.
Thank y'all for having us. We will keep this very short, and like I told Randall earlier, I promise we're not here asking for any money. We just wanted, I know how a lot of people come to you, they tell you they've got all these great plans, you give them a little money to get started, and you don't see them again for a year until they come back up here and ask for money again. And we don't want to be like that. We're not like that. We're working very hard. But as you know, Fort Payne was one of only three cities in the state to be accepted as a Main Street program this year. And we hit the road running. We've got a lot of things going on. Beverly and a couple of our board members are going to speak more as to some of the things we've got going on. But I just wanted to give you a quick overview of how Main Street works, just so you know. It's a little bit different than other boards. You have the Board of Directors, which is thirteen individuals. Then you've got a Director, which is Beverly, that we hired with the funds that you gave us. And she's our full-time employee. And then under her, you have subcommittees. And she's usually made up of one board member and then other committees, sort of like the individual committees you guys do for the different departments. Those committees are like Design Committee. And the Design Committee is in charge of what you most notice, which would be the facade renovations, tree planting, spiffing up downtown, making it look better. That's the Design Committee. We've got a Promotion Committee, which promotes not only Main Street, but promotes the city of Fort Payne. And we've got a lot of things going on with that as well. You've got the Economic Vitality, which is looking at economic studies, historic buildings, historic areas, and looking, what do other towns do to make those thrive? And there's one more, I can't remember what's the other group? Organization. They organize. But we're in subcommittees, they report up to the entire Board, and then Beverly, her job is to take those and run with them. We're working on several plans with downtown. We've got a spring event coming up to where we've got a business owner, it's a vacant building downtown, that we're going to lay out our new, we're coming up with a color scheme for downtown, that way everybody's consistent and all that. And we're going to kind of lay that out and do a little Saturday paint party on this one building. And they'll talk more about that. But what we want to do is be an example. And that's what Main Street's all about, is you're an example to the rest of the community. We've had some things are moving downtown. New buildings have been rented, we're helping with that. Beverly will give you some more statistics that we've already got. One other thing I'll just mention briefly that we're excited about is we're going to be rolling out our Main Street Farmer's Market beginning in June. David is going to help us with that. Gary Culberson is on the Board as well, and myself and Beverly, and of course the entire Board will help with that. But these things really turn into big deals. If you go to Chattanooga, you can go to Pepper Place in Birmingham, thousands and thousands of people. And we know we can do that. Look at Boondays, look at some of the other things we do here that thousands of people show up to. It's going to be a state-certified farmer's market. It's not going to be just some thing we just roll out once a week and then forget about it. It's going to be a legit farmer's market, and it's going to be year-round eventually. But college, you can get different things at different times of the year, crops come in. But for right now, we're looking at about June to October. It's likely going to be between and around the Southern Properties parking lot in the city park, in that area. We've looked at other places, and we've got a lot of things going on at the Rotary Pavilion and some other things, so that's where it's going to mainly be. We're very thankful that y'all have helped us out with this. We could not have gotten started without y'all helping us. Johnny is on our Board, and he's been a big help, and we always want to make sure that we stay in contact with you guys, and that's what the night's about. So, we'll let Beverly, she's going to get into a little bit more detail, I promise we're going to keep it short per Johnny's instructions. So, but also, I want to think, I want to recognize Dana for passing the bar. I think a public congratulations is in order. But our two good workers in this room now, so.
We hope you join us in that.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you. I know what you're waiting for, the numbers, and I do that. We have logged in since January through the end of April over three hundred and fifty volunteer hours. There are certain aspects of the program that we chart that turn into the state, so that's one of them. So, we're very proud of our Board that volunteers, and also our committees that volunteer out in the community to get that number. We had one building sold during January and April in our district, we're talking about our district, down all the way from, it was First Street to Eighth, but we've expanded, it goes all the way down to Third Street South to Eighth Street North. So, it's forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for that sale. Building rehabs, these are property owners who have actually invested to rehabilitate their building. That means anything inside and outside, not the facade, just the building itself, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Building facades, we've had ninety thousand dollars. So, those are what your merchants and property owners are doing with their buildings downtown. We've had one new business that opened, one business that expanded, and we've had, we've got two that are prepped to open pretty soon. They're getting up and running for that, and part of our responsibility is to help them get there. And we've had one business exchange, meaning it was an existing business and it changed to ownership. So, those are pretty good numbers for January through April. We are working on implementing some contracting positions to help us with our funding and application for grants. And as you know, that can be a little complicated and expert in that area, so we're looking into that to help us survive and thrive. In our promotions area, we are harnessing existing events to help bring focus and attention to merchants downtown. And one of those is Book Color Merchant Hub that we're working with on Third Saturday. We're taking a venue outside of the DeKalb Theater, and that'll be kind of a go-to area, a go-to spot area. And it's been, this was our first time in April, of course, but it attracted some young professionals, and they're really excited about the next one and then the next one. So, we've got some good energy there to actually cultivate that. We are developing a merchant program for Fan Appreciation Week, so that our merchants downtown will be able to actually feel some type of a component for them. And there were some strategies that our promotion committees are working on to help with that, to actually get the promotion in the tourist or guest hands, and that is working directly with our hotels. We are developing a Hispanic block party. That date is going to be September the sixteenth. We have a real concentrated area of Hispanics in our block, in our designated area. They are excited to death, I have to say, they are on board. We have a great committee that'll be working and cultivating that up coming up. And we commit, conducted business surveys. You might have seen us, you might have seen Aline, you might have seen a begging, hey, come in. We went and did everyone's input for this marketing survey. We also did business surveys, which is a little different. We did it old-school, in-person, on the street. So, we had over a thousand that participated, and according to the marketing firm that we're working with, that's just incredible numbers. So, we are really excited about that. And what kept coming back to us is love Fort Payne, downtown Fort Payne. So, that is going to be something you'll probably see coming up. And also, the Times Journal has offered us a column in the paper, so I hope all of you will be able to keep up with what's happening with Main Street, their business. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. That all sounds great so far. That's really a great compliment, just in short time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Brewer is the Chairman of the Design Committee, and since that's the thing that you see the most, that's the tree, the facade, the sidewalk, she's going to give you just a brief rundown of a few things that she's got going on there, and then we'll get to the rest.
Hi, and I would like to thank you again for your support through this and for just your belief in what we're doing. So, the things I deal with are the design and kind of how downtown looks. And one of the things we're looking at doing is, like Andrew mentioned, was taking one of the facades that needs some renovation and just do a paint facelift to it. That was recommended to us by the State of Alabama Main Street Association, just because they thought it was a quick win for us and that it wouldn't cost much money to do it. And it's just an easy win. Along with that, one of the things I think we've already been successful at is the vacant window project, where we took some vacant window space. It's actually kind of funny, it got to be a joke with me, it wasn't too funny, but the first one we did was Margaret Stevens' building between the strand and the bookshelf. And we just went out, went in there with her one Saturday, we cleaned, I mean, we took the paper out, cleaned, swept the floors, basically all we did, and then we had, worked with Connie, to get the guy that cleans windows. And so, I was ready to set up a design in there, and it rented. So, I mean, that's all it took. And so, luckily, we went across the street, and before Third Saturday, I was able to create this interactive window, where you just looked in and kind of had some fun with it. And then we did more of an upscale than the other window, which was a dress made out of the Times Journal newspaper, I don't know if you guys saw that.
Yep.
But anyway, it just brought attention to the windows, and lo and behold, a week later, it rented. So, that dress is now popping up in other windows. If you guys know of anybody that has a window, a vacant window, we're glad to try to do something in theirs as well. So, it's a quick win, and I think just people seeing movement downtown has been a big, huge win for us, because people that were maybe borderline about buildings or opening businesses, you know, they just saw movement in that building, and I think, they thought, oh, maybe somebody else is getting that, so they actually took action and decided to open those businesses. The other thing I brought to you was, we're working with an architect, his name is Craig Peavy, from Chattanooga, but he has roots here. His wife is Ellen Houston, so he has a passion for Fort Payne. And he is committed to us, and he's been, he is a bundle of energy, actually, he's kind of like the Energizer Bunny. I get around him, and our creative spirits kind of fit each other, and it gets a little overwhelming at times, but he's helping us work, actually with an intern, Katie Bobo, it's Wade Bobo's daughter, who is an architect student at Auburn. She's going to interview with us some this summer. So, they're working together, well, first of all, as you can see, Greg's agreed to do some consulting. He wants to help us develop a master plan for downtown. And he wants to help us establish policies, and one of those will be a design guideline for downtown, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But he's also offered to be a public facilitator, so if we want to talk to Al God or whoever, he's willing to come and speak in our half. And, I mean, he's a busy man, and he's done a lot of work in Chattanooga, and the renovations and all downtown in Chattanooga, and he does the stuff at night after he comes home. He sends me screenshots of the stuff he's working on. So, one of the things we are working on, and I think Beverly describes it really well when she describes it as a toolkit for property owners downtown, and that's our design guidelines. And that's not meant to be rules downtown, it's just meant to be handed over to a property owner to say, here's something that can facilitate and help you. And I mean, there's got to be some structure, or things happen that don't look very good. So, he's helping us with those things. And the other thing that he's been really helpful with, and Carol is here, and she might want to speak to this a minute, but he wants to help us with the upper-story living space. You know, one of the deals with that is you have to have architect drawings, which is kind of expensive. But he's been willing to help us find people that would draw the plans, as long as the property owner will pay for that. He'll work with the person that draws those, and then finally put that stamp on it, which saves us so much money. And it's such a great tool for us. And so, I'm internally, I feel like indebted to him for that, but he's in the process right now of working with Carol with the Chamber on one of those projects. Did you want us?
Hi, guys. How are y'all?
Hey, here.
One request I have is for a work session. Mr. Peavy wants to come and talk to you, and also to your department heads, to make sure that we're all on the same page. He has given me a rough draft upstairs, but we just want to make sure that we do it correct this time, and that there's no more kinks, and try and renovate that upstairs. And of course, then we'll be the guinea pig, and that everybody will follow us in what we're trying to do. Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So, I'm requesting a work session with you. If you'll give me a couple of dates, so I can give those to Mr. Peavy, that'd be great.
How much time? Do you think it'll exist like an hour-long session or something longer?
Well, we are Department Head, probably.
Don't try to do it before council meeting, we would have to do it before five o'clock. Carol, are you looking at, are you constrained by time? Do you need to do it within a certain amount of time?
Well, my contractor just put on hold right now, and so we need to move as soon as possible.
We've got a work session scheduled for the seventeenth.
Of course, he'll be coming from Chattanooga, so we can.
I don't remember what. That's right. That's right. Well, that's an odd week. On the tenth or the twenty-fourth? That's an odd week. May the tenth or twenty-fourth? Five o'clock?
I came on the twenty-fourth. I got the rest on the red plate.
Okay. Well, shoot, from either the tenth, I'll be next Tuesday. Everybody good? Everybody good with that?
I want to select another day just in case. I mean, does it have to be a Tuesday? It could have to be a Tuesday. We'll probably need to throw a couple of dates out there instead of one in the past.
Thursday, Friday.
You got Chamber after hours on the clock?
Yes.
Okay. Does it have to be five o'clock?
It could be midnight.
Yeah, she said midnight alone.
Yeah, well, it's long, long after seven.
What about Monday? It doesn't work, night through the tenth. Next Monday or Tuesday? I think I'm good. Let's try not, let's shoot for Tuesday, but Monday is a backup date.
And your Department Heads could be here for that.
Who do you need in specific?
Probably Dan, Dawn. Especially Dawn, can you make your?
I know y'all probably won't do it up here, but remember, we have a quarter here that night on Mondays too, so y'all probably downstairs. Just thinking about the parking up here is pretty neat. Yeah, and park in the back, I guess, a lot of us. We'd like it work, let's stick for Tuesday, and Monday is a backup date.
And Monday's a backup date? Okay. Tom, call him on. Okay, and then Peavy, I'll let you know confirmation. Is that okay? I'll let you know confirmation from you.
Yes.
Is that okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And one more thing, and then just to brag on Craig a little bit more, he's been more than willing to send me drawings of the sides for property owners that have requested them. Margaret Stevens was one of them. Within a few days, he had it. That's not something I don't want to overuse, you know, but anyone. I'm just really excited about the work he's doing for us, along with Katie.
So, we need to look at the acre courtyard, we need something in the front, some kind of dressing, dress, just enclosure.
Okay. You say that answer for me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what's the possibility of the breezeway? Can we put a, can we put a visible, can we put an open ceiling in there, or a glass or something, so you can see, so a little natural light can come in? Somebody was talking about where, we can't do that there?
We can't, ain't got that much.
We got the money. In the breezeway that goes through the little?
From the courtyard.
At the bottleneck there.
That's kind of, that's kind of odd, the building here.
Yeah, I know it's kind of dark and scary in there.
Well, you know what, and Craig may do it that night, I can't promise, but it might be that if we could get in here a little early, he might go look at that, and he might offer you a solution.
Yep.
His mind's real.
You do something that is lighted up, make it look?
Okay, and I think I'm going to turn it over.
Yeah, I think that's it. We just wanted to give you guys an update of where we were and some things we were working on, and just let you guys know that we are working hard with what you give us. Well, thanks for that, guys. It's great to hear your strength. Good work. Next, we have further discussion concerning the disposition of the cobbler building. The last time, I think it was the last meeting, one of the, some of the concerns we had was the city eventually maybe being hung with some liability or something.
Not liability, whatever, concerned about means.
That's what, yeah, I like your flow. If something were to happen and they quit operating. So, y'all asked me to speak with Vicky Kirby, so I did, and she made some phone calls, and basically what she told me was that she can't really offer us anything concrete right now. The main reason being, she's not sure what grant she will apply for, she's not sure what's available until she gets a little further in the process. But the grants that she is familiar with and she's looked at, there's no reason for concern. And really, all she can offer us is that, to her, to the best of her ability at this point, the grants she's familiar with, that that's, that wouldn't be an issue. And if we were concerned that there may be another grant available that might have some problems, we would usually put something in their lease that would limit it to grants that wouldn't allow, you know, such fallbacks on us or whatever. And that's really about all she, that's really the only update she has, that's the only assurances if it is at all that she can give us on that. So, she's really anxious for us to yager-nay on this thing, move forward with it or not, so that's where we are.
Well, that's, personally, I think it's way too early to pull the plug on, you know, I think we need to let her proceed, let her get some more information, find out what the options are, what the grants are. You know, right now, that building's not, it's not costing us anything, it's not, you know, costing us any problems. I just think it's way early to change the path now. That's my personal opinion.
I agree. I don't see a break and rush anything like that.
That's where I am, you know, we sort of left with her that, at this point, we're kind of committed to her to a certain extent, and she's just, I guess she's just asking for a little bit more commitment, just, you know, so she can continue to work. She didn't want to be a lot of work, and then two months from now, three months from now, whatever, I just decided not to do it. So, if, you know, if we've got any kind of opening now, that in the future, we may pull the plug on this thing, we need to let her know now, so that she doesn't waste all this time. And I'm still where I was two weeks ago or a month ago. Are they partnered for any, and Dr. C? I mean, I don't know. I'm not sure what the coalition is with them. I don't know.
I think it's just a Vicky, it's Vicky's, you know, I was kind of under pressure that they were going to be like a, you know, kind of partnership, join together, but I don't know if that's still, I don't know if that's.
It seems like she's just kind of taking the ball and run with it on her own, and that's fine. I'm really not concerned how they partner, but it does seem to me like she's kind of taking the lead, and here she goes.
Yeah, I don't know what, how the other guys feel about it, I guess what I'm saying, they came together and, you know, I don't know if they're backing out, where do they stand? Do we know where they stand? I mean, you can say, well, just let it happen then.
I haven't talked to them.
I know.
She is the one that's kind of running, and they backed out, and she's still willing to go.
I think that.
I think the building's secure, and, you know, it's not hurting very little more, and I think just give her time, and just kind of see that.
It looks a lot better than it is.
I didn't see anything go down, it's only refurbished.
You have options, I mean, have opportunity to apply for grants, see what they can do.
So, I guess the next, if we're in agreement, I guess the next thing we need to do is get you involved and get this lease somehow framed out.
As soon as she gives us the name of the entity that she's going to form a nonprofit, and she's got to get it qualified as 501(c), which will take some time, but as soon as we have that, we've got the basic groundwork of what the lease is going to be, and we can most certainly build in something that says that she can't do anything that would create a lien against the property, just generally speaking.
So, right now, just tools down ahead?
Yeah, at this point, we're waiting.
Oh, it's hurtful.
Exactly, yeah.
I think that's really what she wanted, just maybe some reassurances.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay. Next, we have an ordinance and resolution declaring certain recreation department idle surplus. There's a list.
Yeah, Greg's got some TVs, VCRs, he wishes to declare surplus, and that'd be so with the next public auction.
A motion?
Go move.
Motion in a second. For Randall, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is authorized bids for Ask Call.
Come and see. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Activity permit? The DAR?
Only reason I put that on there, on their application, is put up to two hundred people to the ten, so that's going to be a.
Well, it's also seats the four-hour time frame.
Do what?
And they're at four-hour time frame, I'm like.
Yeah, that's just, she just put eight-thirty, and that's what I put down.
Right.
Randy, don't they usually, you allow like thirty-minute?
Yeah, that thing was pretty big last year, but it was, it was good. Yeah, so.
No problem.
No.
Same night, it's the same night as fireworks, but that's what they chose to do.
Motion.
We give them a little bit of time to set up and take that.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Second's on. Any opposed? Motion carried. Are you the leader tonight?
You got a personnel. And we've got just a few things to wear.
Will tell him that you did. Are you done?
And before you finish, if you could, I'd like to give the council and folks nothing that. We had a Boondays committee meeting today, because I want to bring everybody up to speed on how that's going. It's really coming together well. Mari is doing just an unbelievable job for us, and we've got some really big things happening this year. We look to make some announcements, and this Saturday's paper, I believe, is when they're going to run that. Some of the first announcements, some of our entertainment, some of the things we're going to have going on, and I'll tell you, it's going to be big. It's going to be big. We look, also hope to launch the new website Thursday or Friday, kind of in conjunction with those announcements. So, it's really pulling together well. I know it seems a little early, but you have to start early to put something together that big, and so, guys, I'm going to tell you, this is, this is going to be big.
I'd like to say the website is great. It's just fantastic what we add.
Yeah.
It's going to have a lot of information, a lot of different things, so I think Randall and I worked on it, but you know, it's, it's, it's impressive.
Yeah. And it's something that's going to carry us forward for a long time, and it's going to, in the long run, it's going to save us a lot of money. You know, we've been paying money for someone to maintain a website for us because of the way it was designed, and the way this one's been put together, Mari or myself, or pretty much anybody sitting down here in the audience with just very minimal amount of knowledge can maintain that thing and make the changes. can maintain that thing, can make the changes, and put the videos and the pictures and all that stuff in it. It's long-term. It's going to be a great savings for you. Plus, it looks good.
All right, I think that's... I will. We got the annual, the city annual picnic. It'll be on Friday, May the twenty-seventh, at eleven o'clock at the Roadbury Pavilion. Steak sandwiches, chips, zebra cakes, drinks catered by Western Citizen. There'll be service awards, certificates, indoor prizes. Anybody got anything from the audience? Thank you all for being here.